I'll call this Township Council Agenda Meeting to order at 7:30 PM. Would you all join me in the flag saloon?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Carrifi.
Here.
Mr. Sisaro.
Here.
Mr. Ferrera.
Here.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
This is President, our Mayor Barberio, Jasmine Lim, the Business Administrator, Mr. Wischaskala.
Sure.
Is that close enough?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Our Township Attorney, Carol Keough, our Acting Township Clerk. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council meeting of October 18, 2011. Formal action may or may not be taken. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 15, 2010, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record and the Star Ledger and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 16, 2010. Note, Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 2:00 PM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipany.net. Okay, ordinances for second reading. Anyone have any comments or questions on any of those that are for second reading? All right, then we have the status of adopted ordinances. 2011:17, effective date, October 17, and 2011:18, effective date, October 17. And 2011:19, effective date, October 17. Scheduled meetings, October 18, 2011, at 7:30 PM, the regular meeting, public invited, public participation. November 22, 2011, at 7:30 PM, Agenda Meeting, public invited, public participation. Minutes for approval, Agenda Meeting of 9:13:11, regular meeting of 9:20:11. Mayor, anything from you?
Nope.
Okay, Administration, bids taken, none awarded. Jasmine, you want to cover that?
Yes, that actually should be taken, under the Taken column. We're recommending award to the lowest responsible bidder.
Authorizing a contract with Green Sky Industries, Inc. for the marketing of recycled material. Jasmine?
Yes, this is a, we're actually in the middle of a three-year agreement with Green Sky, and we asked for a new proposal from them so that we could consider starting single-stream recycling, which would allow residents to put everything, papers, cans, bottles, into one container for collection. We're hoping that this will not only make it easier for residents, but also increase the recycling rate significantly. The proposal that we received from Green Sky is tremendous. All of the floor prices were raised, and then where there's a fixed rebate price, those prices were raised very significantly. We are, one of the areas where we get a lot of money is corrugated cardboard, and we're going to try to keep that separate even though the residents don't have to. If the residents keep it separate, we'll pick it up separately so that we can gain the benefit of that tonnage.
Why don't we just encourage the residents to continue to keep it separate?
Yes.
Are you going to send out a newsletter?
Yeah, we'll do it.
Well, we're going to have a soft start November 1, and we'll do it through the website and probably press releases.
Okay, because what, the new calendar will come out in a couple of months anyway, right? And you should have that information on the new calendar.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Okay.
New calendar gets printed way in advance of receipts, so we're going to try to...
You ought to react to it now and make sure it's in there.
We're going to try.
Okay. The next item, Approval of Amendment Number One to the 1995 Water Supply Agreement with the Morris County MUA.
This involves an amendment that deals with changes coming down from the NJDEP, and it's really incorporating, instead of just including a daily maximum, we're incorporating, we're translating the daily maximum to a monthly and an annual maximum water volume that the Township can take from the Morris County MUA.
Okay. Approved emergency purchases, store utility?
This is a, for the new road pump station which was damaged during Irene, the cost of the repairs is approximately $40,000.
Where is that? Which one went down?
On New Road.
Where?
It's near...
I'm trying to visualize where it is.
It's in the flood area.
In the flood area, okay.
The part of New Road that floods.
Okay. Okay, awarding contracts for professional engineering, real estate appraisal, and planning services.
We have about 12 professionals that we're asking the Council award contracts on a
Did, were these posted on the Internet? Are these needed to be posted?
They will be posted.
They will be posted on the Internet?
Yes, after the award of the contract.
Okay. All right, authorizing the preparation and submission of an application seeking approval for the Agreement for Bio Processing and Energy Supply Services with Bioenergy Center LLC, Synagro Company.
John Wischaskala is going to handle that.
Yeah, I'll take that one. As everyone will recall, we had a public hearing with respect to the Synagro project on September 13, followed up by a resolution of the Council authorizing the entry into that agreement. You may also recall that part of the checks and balances is that our approval is not the final approval. This has to go down to the state. It goes to both the DEP as well as the Division of Local Governmental Services. Among the documents we submit are the form of contract, a hearing report, the transcripts from the hearings, any public written statements that were made. I don't believe any were submitted as a part of the record, and the application form for the Division of Local Governmental Services, the Local Finance Board. This particular resolution is a specific resolution that Local Finance Board requires. It has to be submitted with our documentation, which we're in the process of finalizing and getting together, so that is the purpose of the resolution that's here.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, awarding a contract to Sunbright Services Building Maintenance LLC for janitorial services for the police headquarters.
We're recommending award of this contract on a non-fair basis. I think we've mentioned to you before how sensitive it is to, in terms of cleaning companies that we use over at police headquarters because of the confidential documents there.
Okay.
Jasmine, one quick question. Mr. President, if I may. On the profession, the award of contracts for the engineering appraisal, and of course, you go down again to the janitorial services, are those based on the lowest bidder?
The, the engineering?
Yes.
Okay, the ones that are...
Well, both of them. Awardings, I'm trying to keep my voice, I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I lost my voice. There's awarding the contracts for professional engineering, real estate appraisal, and planning, and then the one we just went over, janitorial services.
The professionals are on a non-fair basis, so there was no advertising. These are...
Is the door closed?
The door locked.
These are...
Danny, open the door. Thank you, Danny.
These are professional...
Didn't we have the bar to keep that door open?
It's all been stuck.
Oh, it's stuck?
Yeah, we got it fixed.
These are professional firms that we are currently utilizing for various projects, and we will, you know, it's very difficult to go out with an RFP or RFQ every year for, particularly for engineers, because we have different types of engineering services that the Township requires, and in the past, we've received submittals, 90 different proposals from maybe 30 different companies, and we qualify all of them. They all qualify, but we don't use them all. You know, and so these are firms that we're currently using. We'll probably go out with an RFQ the end of this year for next year's, and we try to do it about every other year.
Okay, so it's basically for issues that are coming up that they're not already handling, but we'll ask them to handle it?
Yes, we can, we can ask them to handle it.
Okay.
Yes.
But they're already our particular consultants for those three kinds of services?
Yes.
Engineering, real estate, and planning?
Yes, there are a couple of firms that are missing because we don't have all of the paperwork back from them yet, but we'll handle them at the next meeting as soon as the paperwork's available.
And then in the new year, we'll just, I guess, recycle, not recycle, but go through the whole process again?
We'll do, we'll do the fair and open process.
Okay, and for the janitorial services?
Janitorial services, same thing. We did not issue an RFP.
Okay, the same people that are currently?
Yes.
Okay, but new work needs to be done that we're going to allow them to handle?
It's not new work, it's just that their contract, their prior contract expired, so we're contracting with them.
Okay, are we going to do the same thing with this janitorial service in the new year?
I, we're reluctant to do it. When we've done it in the past, we've gotten companies that, although they're required to have their workers vetted through the police department, have not complied with that and have sent in employees who were not vetted, had not been previously vetted. We've had tremendous success with Sunbright. They've been very compliant with and sensitive to the requirements of the police department.
So this is a company that's basically built up goodwill, not only with us, but with our police department?
Yes, I don't think they've been with us that long. I want to say a few years, but they've been very good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, emergency repair of turf field at Veterans Park. Was that damaged by the water?
Yes, it was, it was very severely damaged. We actually have elected to replace the carpet rather than repair it. If we replaced the carpet, it would cost us $90,000, 48 of which is reimbursable by the insurance company, but that would only give us a two-year life, and so our plan is to replace the carpet, and that cost us close to $400,000. No, I'm sorry, it's $325,000. That will give us a 10-year life on the field. It was...
How much it has picked up by the insurance?
The $48,000.
$48,000.
But we have fund, you may recall, especially Mike, that when we bonded for Veterans Park, there was a lot of money put into that, and we still have funds remaining, and that's where we would obtain the balance of the funds.
Question, Jasmine, how about the recreation portion of the Open Space Fund?
We could use that, but we don't need to, because we already have a, we already have a bond ordinance in place that's funded for Veterans Park, and there's a balance in that.
There's a balance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we're already paying interest on that, anyway?
Yes. I don't know, I don't know whether Ruby has actually borrowed money, but the...
Yeah, because if we can...
The ordinance has been authorized.
Okay, because I was going to say, if we can get away, if we can get away with using the open space portion, it's not a tax increase. You know what I'm saying? Can you check into that for me?
This also is not a tax increase, will not be a tax increase.
Well, that's why I was asking, so it's not gonna, we're not going to have any problems with interest or anything like that? So it's basically because we've already bonded, no effect on the taxpayers?
Right.
Okay.
And I'll double-check before next week.
Yeah, because if you can, can we, then can we table that till you double-check it, or?
I'd rather leave it on, and if we, if I find out in the meantime, then we'll take it off. We'll remove it from the agenda next week.
Okay, and then I'm sure we've got a significant portion of money in the open space recreation portion of the fund that we collect.
Okay, moving on.
I'm not finished. Hold on, Mr. Durbin, I think she was thinking of something. I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think whether we've allocated any funds from this year yet, and we have, I don't think we have. We only allocated the historic preservation portion of it.
But if you do have money in the, in the park, it makes sense to use that.
Yeah, so you'll let us know, Jasmine?
I will.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and the ordinances, granting municipal consent for the operation of cable television system within a township, Parcipony Troy Hills. We already had that public hearing with the cable company.
We, we need to table this again. I actually just received an email from Gary Shaw, who came to speak to the Council at that public hearing, and we're going to be sitting down and negotiating and to determine what should go into that ordinance.
Okay. Now, engineering report is next. Does anybody have a copy of the engineering report?
There were no changes. It didn't receive...
No changes throughout the whole report?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Chief Financial Officer, you're going to do that too, Jasmine?
Yes.
Authorizing emergency appropriation of funds with respect to Hurricane Irene.
Yes, the CFFL is requesting an emergency for $500,000, $300,000 in overtime, and $200,000 in operating expenses. Most of the operating expenses relate to hauling the debris out of Lake Hiawatha. It's, the tipping fees on that has been tremendous. One thing I would also like to note is that it's, it may be that we would have to add close to $400,000 for damage to the library as a result of the flooding during Irene, and most of that really is related to mitigation, the damage...
Which library?
The main library.
Main library?
Yeah, it was actually in this, this issue of Parcipony Life, the damage that the library suffered in the basement.
Jasmine, one quick question. On that, what's the total amount?
It's 500 right now. If we had to add the library, it would, it would be 900.
900. Question, is that going to come out of that line item that we always discuss in the budget, where it's like the same every year, like $2 million, $2 million?
For the library? You mean the dedicated?
No.
Yes.
Where I say, well, we may not, I'm the one who's always asking to cut, like a half a million off of it every year. Is that where it's going to come from?
No, well, we actually own that building. We acquired the facility, we paid to renovate it. I'm trying to determine with the Township Attorneys whether we have an obligation to mitigate it.
No, but also the $500,000 for the overtime, are we going to get the money from?
The $500,000, most of that, we hope we, will recoup from FEMA.
FEMA?
Yes.
Okay.
The, oh, the other thing I just want to note is, this is an emergency to raise the money. What happens is, we would raise it in next year's budget, and it's out of cap.
Okay.
And if, and if we get money from FEMA to reimburse us, that will...
We would take it in as revenue, offsetting revenue.
Okay, that's right, that's one of the cap exemptions, the exigent circumstances?
Yes.
I think Irene was an exigent circumstance.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Attorney, none submitted. Township Officers and Committees, none submitted. Correspondence, none. Applications, limo owner, owner's license, new American access limousine, 181 New Road, Suite 225, is all of that in order? Carol?
Yes, it is, sir.
And the liquor license, person-to-person transfer?
Yes, I reviewed that, it's all in place.
Okay, thank you. Those are on. Okay, now we're ready for a public hearing. You have five minutes. Now, you have a choice. You can let us respond to you real time, which takes up part of your five minutes, or you can ramble on for five minutes, and then we'll take time to answer your questions or concerns. Come in, come up, sign, sign in, name and address.
Hey, Roy, how you doing?
Somebody signed in already. Is that you, sir? Oh, no. Well, this is...
Hi, Rich.
Roy Messmer, 10 Drummond Drive, hello, everyone. Tonight, I'm hoping for a good explanation as to why an ordinance is not being followed. Said ordinance is 57-8, which was adopted on October 21, 2008. I have copies here, but there's a pretty good turnout, I don't think I have enough to pass around. Let me read it to you. "No person whose date of employment begins after the effective date of this article shall receive a township vehicle for his or her business use as part of his or her compensation package. Furthermore, no employee who replaces an employee who as of the effective date of this article receives a township vehicle for his or her use as a part of his or her compensation package shall be entitled to receive a township vehicle as part of his or her compensation package." That was verbatim there. "Therefore, why is Joe Plecher taking a township vehicle home every night, including weekends, for quite a while now? If there is not a very good explanation, then he should reimburse the Township of Parcipony at the IRS mileage allowance rate and immediately stop using the vehicle for personal use." Brian, how much time have I used up?
A minute and 10.
Okay, so I'll go a little bit longer. I'd like to hear a response from each of you tonight. Thank you.
Start with the mayor?
You start me is absolutely what you would do. Very good, Roy.
Okay.
I'm going to look into that, Roy, because I authorize it only one time to go home, not to stay home. I said he could use a township vehicle when he's here, when he had his job, going around here and there, but I will definitely ask him.
Actually, I didn't recognize the number until you actually started reading the ordinance. That was something, that was an ordinance myself and Councilman, now Freeholder Grassi, actually both authored and proposed for submission to the Council and was successfully passed, so I'm going to wait what the mayor, the mayor has to say, because the ordinance, what me and Phil, allowing me, Freeholder Grassi, at the time, were trying to do, was basically saying, "No more, no more cars to take home, period."
Right.
So that's, that's how I feel today, so, but Mayor, I'll leave it to you to...
I'll handle it. In fact, when I approved it for the one time, it was because he was going to be using it for town business first thing in the morning.
Oh, I have no issue with that approval.
He's going to take it home every day, I'll handle it.
Okay, I was not aware of it, Roy, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Always brought to my attention. We're both eagle now, but I can't see everything.
Troy got lucky, you know.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next.
Richard Rosenthal, 3 Cambridge Road. Every year I come before you and always complain about my address being Morris Plains.
It still is.
This is, tonight it's serious, and I'm playing right for, right for the heart of this. On August 29, Irene knocked out the power in our house.
By the way, how's your wife?
I'll get to that.
Okay.
That's a crucial part of it.
Okay.
The power went out, which meant we have opt online, we can't get any power. Wind started to blow, my wife was concerned about one of our cars in the driveway, went into the garage, and at that point, two massive trees came down, smashing into the garage with my wife in it. I was about to go out to the garage, opened it up, couldn't see anything, the only thing I saw was the sky above. I started to scream, "Harriet, Harriet." Thank God she was alive, we pulled her out of the rubble. And I called, now here's where I'm coming in, I called 911, and this is one thing I, this is the one thing I learned from the citizen, from the police academy that I took. When you call a 911 number on your cell phone, you are not getting Parcipony. Now, you can play the tape on this. So I call up the number, and I said, "3 Cambridge Road, Parcipony, New Jersey." She, the operator, said, "Morris Township?" I said, "Parcipony." I have Morris Township. I said, "Get off the phone and get me Parcipony 911. You want Parcipony? I want Parcipony." By pure luck, the guy across the street from me is a nurse at St. Clair's Hospital. He and his wife are nurses, and he's head of ER. He says, "I'll take you to the hospital." He drove. This was the delay of a 911 operator not knowing anything about where we were until I started, and again, this is where this course fades off. Let me go back to where I'm saying again, Parcipony. For years, I've listened to the same story over and over again. It's a federal responsibility, and I've always said, Little Falls and West Patterson share the same ZIP code of 07424. I worked for the post office, and it became civil service, one of my jobs when I went through school. I learned how to sort mail. What they're telling you is nonsense. I know you're going to tell me, and this is what your answer is going to be, because it's always been, "Well, you have to realize the federal responsibility, get ahold of Rodney Frelingheysen, they'll straighten it out." What I'm proposing is not against the law. Now, Jasmine had once asked me to, well, who's going to pay for this? So I'll tell you what I'll do. I will make a check payable to the town for $100. I want you to mail a letter to the people in Powdermill or in Morris Plains and write "Parcipony 07950." I don't care about the ZIP code. I lived in Newark, we had 12 ZIP codes. You had to learn the ZIP codes. I don't care what my ZIP code is. I want to write "Parcipony," I want to write, I don't care what this number is. This does not apply to Lake Hiawatha, this doesn't apply to Lake Parcipony, this doesn't apply to any, or Mount Tabor, this applies, I live, my address is another municipality. By the way, I know where the other 3 Cambridge Road is, because I get this other guy's mail, it's near the police station there. So here's what happens, and I'll ask Cindy help on this one. You call up, you tell them, you're letting some postal employee make a decision as to our town. You get ahold of the reporter, and you say to her, "I am going to mail 100 letters to Parcipony 07950. Let him say no to your face, and Cindy will give you a Heckman article." Now, I got this shirt, it's worn out over the years, and I really mean this. Do you want me to wear the shirt anymore? Best place to be is Parcipony? Think about it. My life, life was in danger, and this was the delay, and this is what's going to happen. I don't need a hearty apology, or "How's your wife?" or anything else of that nature. It happened, it's over, and now I'm asking that something be done. I was going to say, "It's your town." No, it's our town, and it's our town to make a decision. Either you do nothing, or blame somebody else, or you take my $100.
That, you know, your, your argument is right on. I went all the way up to the Postmaster General of the United States of America with that same argument. There are 10 ZIP codes that serve Parcipony, so why can't we say, "Parcipony, New Jersey, 07005, Parcipony, New Jersey, 070950," and so forth, all the way down the line? I was told, I said, "You root by ZIP code, so if we put Parcipony, it shouldn't make any difference. Your ZIP code will still root it to that post office to distribute the mail, but at least we get to say Parcipony." It's made a lot of sense to me, and I was told by the Secretary of the Postmaster General of the United States of America that they do not root by ZIP code, which is a lie.
Do it, just mail it.
The United States Post Office lied to me. Maybe it's time to take that up again. I did that about 15 years ago, maybe we should bring...
I'm asking you not to take it up, I'm asking you to say, "We're mailing it with a reporter, she'll get a great story out of it, and you'll get, and you'll get a great thing of putting our town on. So it's being paid for, you're saying, 'I'm mailing.'" It is not illegal. I get letters misdirected all the time, so whoever did it didn't make a mistake. It's not illegal. Just do it. You're going to talk about it, just do it. You took your effort, they're not doing it.
The option that they tell us works, and in fact, one segment of our town that had a Dover post office address, if you circulate a petition, and the vast majority of people with that ZIP code, sign the petition that they want to change their ZIP code, they would change to Randolph, I believe, from, they'd rather have...
Puttingstone area?
Yeah, Puttingstone area, up beyond Greystone. They had a Dover address, and they, they got... They had a Dover address, and they got it changed to Randolph address, which they felt was more palatable than Dover. So, you can get it done if you get enough people that wanna change their address. Now, I submit to you that the people in Intervale with Mountain Link's address don't wanna change their address.
That's unacceptable. They did it 35 years ago. I'm not passing petitions out. All I'm saying to you is, just mail the letter, tell them what you're doing, and let the mail be returned to you, and then go back again and say, "Look, we sent it, this is Parshipany." I'm not passing out petitions. I'm not going out to do this. It's too late, it's a stage in my life. I've lived here for all these years. Either you do it, or you don't do it. And all it is, is simple mailing. It's not illegal. I'm giving you $100. I'll stuff the envelopes if you don't wanna send postcards. I'm dead serious. My wife is in the game right now. So, what are you gonna do, apologize the next time something happens? Well, I didn't say get the petitions out?
I'd like to ask you a question. I just don't understand, so you said you work for the post office, right?
No, when I went to school.
Okay.
That was 40 years ago.
Okay, I just have a question that I don't understand. What's the difference if we mail it, or if you mail it?
Because I'm nobody.
Oh, okay.
I'm nobody.
Okay.
This is Mayor Barberio.
I only asked a question.
He takes, okay, now blow your horn.
I understood that.
He takes pride in his town.
Okay.
You heard him over and over again, "Take, this is his town, and I will say it's our town, but I don't want you to stand out here alone. It's his town, this is the shirt, we have pride in Parshipany, the best place to be is Parshipany. We had that. I got the shirt. I got two of these shirts." All I'm saying, if you mail it, you get the publicity. If I mail it, Cindy says, "Who are you?" And I'll get 100 letters back to my house. So what? It disappears. You get it back, and then you go back and say, "Why do we have this here?" He's our mayor, he's proud of this town, and he's time after time, and he knows where I stand when I talk to him. I don't come into complaining to him. I tell him, we both come from the same perspective of pride and parshipany.
I was only asking a question, I got it.
No.
Sir, I agree with you, because I'm in the same situation. I live in Parshipany. I tell everyone, I am from Parshipany. I have a Morris Plains mailing address, and I've had things mailed to me where I've told people I live in Parshipany, they put "Parshipany," and the mail has been returned to them, and I never received the mail.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else want to speak?
How are you? Jerry Banky, Farron Drive.
Hey Jerry, how you doing?
You signed in, Jerry?
Jerry Banky.
Did you sign in?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Just to bring kind of everybody up to speed, I got a little captive audience with the BA and the attorney here. Been working with the mayor, with Greg Schneider, on and on. Spoke to Mr. DePiero, Mr. Stanton, many times, about the same thing. January 21st of this year, I was snowblowing my driveway and was struck by a township plow, okay? The plow came around my vehicle, which was parked on the road, and as it tracked around, the back of the truck hit my snowblower, throwing me into my driveway. Driver continued on, okay? My neighbor had to go up the street and stop him, and he states he didn't hit me. Police report was taken. I was taken by ambulance to the hospital, and the police report stated that the driver didn't see me. Okay, fine. I can buy that, whatever. I came up here, tried to file paperwork to have my snowblower fixed, okay, and was given a packet of paper, BA's office, and filled the paper out, returned it, and said, "I don't need to go through all this stuff. Just take care of the stuff that I had. I got a $749 bill from the emergency room, and a $300 bill for the snowblower, all right? I'm not asking for new snowblower, you know, I just need a snowblower, all right? It was my father's snowblower, by the way, so he's on my butt more than anybody else, right? But, anyhow, the snowblower got fixed, okay? And I figure, you know, I grew up in this town, you know, I love this town, this is a great town, no problem, you go up, take care of it. Well, no such luck. I wanted to see Greg, known Greg all my life, all right? Was on the fire department with Greg. Didn't get anywhere with it. Came to see Jamie. I'll take care, we're gonna work on it, you know, this, that, and the other thing. Then I get a letter from Jiff, okay? And Jiff says that they did some investigation, all right? And the driver of the vehicle states that he apparently saw me in the road and saw me pushing my snowblower now into the township vehicle, okay? So, they said because of that, and Title 59, that it was my fault, okay? And they're not gonna be responsible for the claim, okay? Now, this is, it's crazy to me. It's absolutely crazy. They're not responsible, and yet, my neighbor across the street had their mailbox knocked over, okay, after the storm. Township workers over there fixing the mailbox, all right? I'm not looking to sue, to bring lawsuit against anything. All I want is the bill paid for, for the snowblower, and for my ER visit. I don't think that's too much to ask. I came up the other day, Mr. Rivera was out sick, I tried to see the BA. BA won't see me. She won't see me. This is Parshipany, I grew up in this town. I come up here, I see George Clark anytime I wanted to see, when he was around, okay? What kind of town is this turning into? The attorney's saying, "Oh, it's gonna be a problem between you and Jiff." How can it be a problem between me and Jiff when it's the Parshipany driver who hit me? You know? It's gonna cost the town, if I have to file on this, it's gonna cost the town more than this bill to answer it and go to court about it. It's ridiculous. And I'm asking for help here. And I know, you know, it's not your guys' job, it's BA and the attorney and Jiff, or whatever's gotta be done, but I want everybody to be aware of what's going on here. And this is the kind of town you want? I've been a volunteer fireman in this town, all right? I'm a life member of Rockland First Aid Squad. Farron Drive Crime Watch Association, me and my wife started, we had all those break-ins, all right? We stopped all that. You guys were at the meetings and stuff like that. I coached baseball, I coached football, all right? I do anything that you guys need, okay? I try to help out as best I can. I think I'm a pretty upstanding citizen in the town. I think that I deserve a little bit better treatment than that. The BA doesn't even want to see me? That's craziness. I'm just upset about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jerry.
Mr. Banky, do you have a...
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Do you have a police, do you have a copy of the police report?
I don't have one with me today. I have the Jiff letter, but the mayor has it.
Okay.
Yeah. All the stuff is there. I mean, it's been here since January.
Mayor, do you wanna respond to that?
I said to Jerry, I'm gonna meet with him in my office, and the response to it is the Title 59, the Jiff is not going to cover it. I explained that to Mr. Banky, that...
But if there's a difference in testimony between what the actual report says...
I understand that, and that's why, this isn't the place. Let me put it to you that way.
Okay.
It's litigation, if it's gonna get to that matter, it needs to be handled that way. This is not the form for it. And that's why I'll meet with Jerry in my office, and with Jasmine, and I'll speak to the township. I spoke to the township attorney already.
Okay.
But if you can't, to discuss it now, could put not only Jerry at risk, could put the township at risk.
Correct, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else?
Pat Patacia, 182 Hawkins Avenue. First question, is the police department, with all the promotions, new chief, lieutenants, sergeants, and whatever, that have all been promoted, have there been increases in salary with all these promotions?
Yes, there are.
Where, may I ask, did this money come from?
From the police budget.
I knew it was stacked. This is ridiculous. I mean, you know, let's get, step into the job and work at it, and then give the promotions.
They've been in the job for very long, Pat. We needed to make the promotion.
Jamie, we have moved everybody up, and we don't have enough cops. You're complaining about not having enough cops. I mean, this is, it is ridiculous.
Right. Exactly. I'm not gonna talk about it now.
Well, Jamie, you do owe the public an answer, and I would really like Jasmine to be informed as to what the raises were, her individual plus the chief, please. The ordinance that you have, that you're gonna be reading a second time, I got a question quickly on it. I was reading it tonight before I came, and I had asked you last week whether it was a water rate increase, and you had said no, which I do see it's not. It's actually a charge of $281 for installation. Right on the resolution page, Jamie.
Page two.
Page two, yeah. And go down, one, two, the second one. That second one there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. They're not changing water prices. What you're doing is charging a fee of $281?
Yes. The current ordinance, we have charges for different size meters, but we don't have one for a 10-inch meter. This is the first time we've seen a 10-inch meter, and we can't charge a fee unless it's in the fee ordinance.
Jazz, that's also on a case-by-case basis, right?
No, this is what we charge for, this is what we will charge for a 10-inch...
No, no, but I mean, I'm sorry, strike that. Meaning, when someone comes to get the work done?
If a developer or contractor installs a 10-inch meter, then we need, in order to collect for that meter...
That's what I'm saying, it's not this new blanket fee on everybody.
Correct.
Okay.
If you look at the existing ordinance, it probably says 4 inches, 6 inches, 8 inches, but we...
But you've never paid for that. Is this the water meter that you're attaching now that they can come around and just, like, pass your house?
This says sprinkler standby, and to tell you the truth, I'm not sure what that means. But the way that the fee was determined was prorated based on the fees for the other meter sizes.
All right. So, you're not really sure what the gizmo is? Like, I'm thinking it's that meter that you were putting on everybody, the new meters that are gonna come out. That's not it?
No, that's a meter reader to read individual homes. What Jasmine's talking about is commercial properties. Residential homes, you have a, your water meter is with the 3/8, 3/4 inch pipe, something like that, okay?
This is more commercial.
And that's the rate you pay. When you go to 1 inch, 2 inch, 3 inch, 4 inch diameter pipes, you pay a different rate, a commercial rate. And those rates are established by ordinance. We didn't have, apparently, we have not had a 10-inch pipe before. Apparently, that has to be an office building with a sprinkler system with a lot of heads.
It says a rate for 10-inch fire line.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I was just, I couldn't understand it. I was thinking, the way it's termed, I was thinking it differently. Okay, thank you for the explanation. The resolutions in the back, to be worked on. Yeah, page, whatever.
Which one?
On page four?
Yeah, I guess it's page four. All the resolutions that you talk about today, and you've asked some questions, which is basically what everybody's asking to pass, and I just have a suggestion, maybe, that instead of asking these questions, like, if we could put the amount that it cost us, could you do that? Put the amounts, like what the bid was, if you took it, was it the lowest, was it the highest? Could you put that on there, so that public has an idea of what's there?
On some of these, we can. Others will be a little bit difficult. For example, the professional services contracts, that would be really difficult.
But we could do it on some of them, though.
Yes.
All right, can you take it as a suggestion, then?
Sure.
Okay, and...
Time is up. Sorry, Pat. We're gonna hold fast.
Come on, sit quicky.
No, no, no. Next time, sorry. And then the next person wants more time, too, and then we can go on and on. Anyone else wish to speak?
Rich Kawa, 95 Lake Shore Drive in Lake Hiawatha. I was wondering if there's gonna be a follow-up at next week's meeting to the investigation. I'm new to this, I'm coming to these meetings. In community, this Parshipany life, September 23rd, there was a question about the status of the investigation, and this newspaper says, quote, "The mayor, this administration is investigating." The question is, at next Tuesday's meeting, will there be a status report, partial, or any discussion?
Well, I know exactly where you live, Mr. Kawa. And I think when we met, at Lower Lake Hiawatha, by the, after the flood, I know you have a house to the right with a command center.
You passed by my house, that's correct, yeah.
Yes, I know exactly where you are. I want, and I have done some investigation. I'm waiting for the engineer report on the United Water. I visited the dam. We've done several things of that. There will be follow-up. I'll be having an OEM meeting to get all, you know, everything that has been put in place, especially United Water, because I know that's your concern. I read the reports, I got the, you know, I spoke to the township attorney, and from that point on now, I know you contacted our township attorney, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, so, well, John Lucino. And I will have some sort of a report on what we've investigated, yes.
Will it be partial statements made next Tuesday, or you will let us?
Well, I will, what I'll do is, I'll get the report from the engineer, and I'll see if he has it ready. Actually, I thought I would have it by now, to be totally frank with you. And then, well, I can even call you up when I have the report.
Yeah, if you will present something, I'd like to know, then I'll attend the meeting. If it's not on the agenda, there's no...
Well, I can, what I can do is, I'll give you a call.
Great.
All right.
And if it's not gonna be next Tuesday, can anticipate two, three weeks for such a report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich.
Anyone else wish to come forward?
I wish, but you...
Sorry, Pat. Sorry, Pat. All right, seeing no one else come forward, other than Pat, I close the public portion.
Clerk, Madam Clerk, are we reading this motion here?
Yeah, we have to go into closed session.
You have to sign someone, it's Mr. DePiero, lost my voice.
It's page six on the agenda.
Yeah.
You wanna read that?
You wanna go in the office, or you wanna hear some tapes?
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion public from meeting in certain circumstances. Whereas township councils, the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, whereas township council wishes to discuss personnel matters, whereas minutes will be kept once matter involving confidentiality above no longer requires, confidentiality and minutes can be made public. Now, therefore, be resolved by township council. Township Parshipany Troy Hills, public be excluded from this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stanton, second by Mr. Cesaro. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chaffrey.
Karifi, yes.
Oh, Karifi.[1688.54]
You snuck in a new councilman when I was gone.
That's okay.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Have a good night, everyone.
All right, we will adjourn to the mayor's office, you can stay here.
I'm gonna sit in the back.
You wanna sit in the back?
Yeah, we're actually, we're actually gonna use this room.
Karifi.
Karifi. Murdering that name.
Killing it.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
I do apologize.
Okay, I will offer the resolution, we went into closed session for... Yeah, and if I may, I just wanna make it clear for the record, we did go into a closed session, which, which is an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act, to discuss a matter, it was actually both a personnel and litigation matter. We were discussing a resolution of a lawsuit, that is what the, the purpose of the resolution before you this evening is, and I just wanna make that clear for the public, terms, et cetera, are confidential by the nature of the litigation itself, but there is a resolution that is about to be presented. Thank you, Mr. Wis... Scala. Got it. That's, that's a little more difficult than Karifi. Okay, resolution of the township, Parsippany Troy Hills, authorizing a complete and permanent settlement agreement and release slash dismissal of all claims with Acting Deputy Chief Paul Phillips. Whereas on May 20th, 2011, Acting Deputy Chief Paul Phillips of the Parsippany Troy Hills Police Department commenced an action known as Paul Phillips versus Township Parsippany Troy Hills, Docent Number 2010-3678, in parentheses, "The Appeal," close parentheses, "before the New Jersey Civil Service Commission appealing a promotional decision of the Township Parsippany Troy Hills, and whereas to avoid the cost and uncertainty of continued litigation, Phillips and the township desired to resolve all disputes arising from or related to Phillips' employment with the township, and whereas the township and Phillips have fully and fairly negotiated the dispute underlying the appeal and have reached an agreement, and whereas the agreement between Phillips and the township has been memorialized in a complete and permanent settlement agreement and release slash dismissal of all claims. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that one, the township council hereby authorizes the complete and permanent settlement agreement and release slash dismissal of all claims by and between the township and Phillips, and two, the township council hereby authorizes the mayor, business administrator, and/or township clerk to execute and deliver the complete and permanent settlement agreement and release slash dismissal of all claims, Phillips, in the manner set forth in the complete and permanent settlement agreement and release slash dismissal of all claims." Well, lawyers talk funny, don't they? All right, there's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Ferrera, roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.